Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening. On behalf of Hawkinsville City Council and City Government and HRC, we're going to read a proclamation for Pride Month. And whereas Hawkinsville is a community that values diversity and inclusion and committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents, and whereas every resident is equal before and under the law and has the right for equal protection, equal benefits of the law without discrimination. All humans beings are born free and equally in dignity and right. Lesbians, gays, bisexuals, transgenders, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA+ community has made immeasurable impacts to the academic, culture, civic, economic success in Ark County, state, and local communities. And whereas Pride Month begins in June of 1970 on the first anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, often known as the beginning of the modern LGBTQIA+ right movement. And the first Pride March also occurred in June of 1970. Each year in June, America comes together to celebrate and reflect on the LGBTQIA+ right movement and the community. And whereas Pride Month is a time to recall the trail of the LGBTQIA+ community has endured and to rejoice in the triumph and trailblazing individuals who have bravely fought and continues to fight for full equality for generations. LGBTQIA+ America have summoned the courage to live authentically and proudly, even when it meant putting their lives and livelihoods at risk. Now therefore, I, James R. Knight Jr., Mayor of the City of Hawkinsville, along with the Human Rights Commission, do hereby proclaim June as Pride Month. In Hawkinsville, we are encouraged, all citizens, to recognize the achievements of the LGBTQIA+ community to celebrate the great diversity within our community and build the culture, inclusive and exception for all people. Signed and sealed, 17th day of June 2025. Thank you. I get everyone.
Evening, everyone. I'd like to call this June 3 regular city council meeting to order, and we'll call on Ward 11 for the invocation, Mr. Bale.
This evening, I'd like to call up my son Jonathan Bale to provide the invocation.
There you go.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Father God, I thank you for waking us up this morning. I thank you for putting clothes on our back. Father God, thank you for everything you do. Father God, I pray for my dad, city council, and the mayor. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Call on the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Member Stallins.
Present.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner.
Here.
Councilmember Meek.
For Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bale.
Here.
Councilmember Drouet.
Here.
We do have a forum.
All righty. Item five is public hearing on municipal road aid and local government economic assistance. I call on the clerk to read this.
Tonight, we are holding a public hearing for municipal road aid and local government assistance funds. The hearing is being held pursuant to KRS 174.100 and KRS 42.455. It is being held to solicit comments from citizens regarding the use of municipal road aid assistance funds in amounts of $722,400 and local government economic assistance funds in the amount of $30,900. So at this time, if there are any comments, please proceed. Give your name, and you have three minutes to speak at the podium.
Anyone like to speak on the municipal road aid and local government economic assistance? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move into wards and recognitions. And we don't have any of them this evening. And item six, we'll move into public comment. And like anyone would like to come and speak at the podium, give their name and address, and we have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening, everybody. City Councilman and Mayor.
How you doing?
I'm here on behalf of your budget for 2025-26. Your budget that you had recommended is an estimate of what the city will be required in that year to spend. And I am here on behalf of our neighborhood to make sure that we get some kind of funding for our neighborhood association. I believe they asked for $350,000. I don't know how much is available for them. I'm just asking as a citizen. And, oh, I forgot to give my address. 1811 Seventh Street is my address. And my name is Natasha Francis. I'm sorry, I thought you guys all knew me. I'm sorry. And I'm hoping that you guys can find it somewhere in your budget to help us keep helping the neighborhood because we are in need of repairs on several properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Anyone else like to speak? All righty. We'll move into item eight, Mayor's Comments. All right, first off, I don't want nobody to forget Saturday, June 21st at 6:00. Out at the Penney Road RDNC's got the tickets available for the benefit at the Bend. We need everyone to come out and enjoy that. We're going to have a good time at the extension office. And on that, Mr. Charles and Ms. Diane do a great job. And that little piece of pie in the pitcher here doesn't do it no justice, Ms. Diane. Okay? But come out, we're going to have grill pork chops, a lot of some silent auctions, and good friends and fellowship. So if you could make it out to the benefit for the Bend at the extension office at 6:00 Saturday, June 21st on that. Other items under Mayor's Comments. I would like for us to keep in our prayers Chief Warrant Officer Dustin Wright and his family, they lost a life. He did in the helicopter crash in Fort Campbell last week. If we can keep them people in our prayers, them families, please do because they do need our prayers and support. Juneteenth at Boys and Girls Club is Saturday at 12 to 6 on the 21st. Want everybody to come out for that. We also had an unveiling of an historical marker down here by the Founder's Square here by the little covered pavilion. Elder Watson Diggs, Calf Alpha Cy did a great thing. Holly and him appreciate all your hard work with that when with them. And on that, we appreciate all y'all's hard work getting that done for us on that. The downtown entertainment district will open on the 21st. We are going to have a lot of that going on. So come out, visit the local businesses, get your cup, walk around, visit with all the businesses, and enjoy yourselves on that. July 4th is going to be in Rough Park. We want everybody to remember Rough Park. You'll come out and enjoy that. Toby and him's got a fireworks show is already lined up. Mike and Dave, they're going to have a lot of people out there with the employees working, making sure everybody's safe. So come out and enjoy July 4th with us over on North Drive at Rough Park on that. Also, July the 11th, we have the Hop Town Throwdown. So come out and just enjoy that down here at the square and see how we, everybody can enjoy that. Okay? Now, we will move into officers and committees and guest speakers, and we're going to the monthly financials. Ms. Melissa Clayton.
All right, good evening. We'll start with the May interfund transfers. We had one interfund transfer in the month of May to the Kiwanis Club for $1,000. Total interfund transfers for year-to-date is $87,819, leaving $12,181 remaining in the interfund account. Our payroll tax through 11 months is at $20,742,627. That's still coming in over budget. Our equivalent payroll is, well, you see it there. So our increase in equivalent payroll is 7.17%. Our property tax collections for the year stands at $5,597,815, which is 96.9% of what we budgeted this year. Our insurance premium tax through 11 months was at $7,454,036, giving us an increase over last year's insurance premium tax of 12.67%. Business licenses for the year totaling $3,638,237, which is below last year's amount by $1.2 million. Our general fund balance, we started the year with prior year encumbrances of $3,48,328. We've collected year-to-date revenue $52,083,858. Our actual year-to-date expenses so far, $48,865,497, giving us positive revenue over expenses of $3,566,689. We'll compare that with where we were at this time last year. We are about $2 million less right now than where we were this time last year. Our municipal road aid fund, we started the year with $37,200 in encumbrances. We've collected $639,822. We've spent $859,440. So we have more expenses than we have revenue by $182,616. Subtracting out our current encumbrances of $5,273 gives us a negative balance for this year in the MRA fund of $187,889. Our capital fund through 11 months, we started the year with $348,328 in encumbrances. We've collected $2,874,682. We have spent $1,830,632. So we have positive revenue over expenses in our capital fund of $1,392,378. Our departmental expenses through 11 months, we should be at $91.67. Sorry. Our administration department is at $85.8. Our tax department's at $77.9. Information technology is at $90.3. And legislative is at $99.1. The police department is at $90.1. ECC is at $90.8. The fire department is at $89.7. EMS department is at $106.5. And fire prevention is at 86.5%. In the public works area, public works admins at 85.8. City maintenance is at 85%. Fort Campbell contracts is at 56.9. Service center was at 86.7. Parks and Rec was at 81.3. The sportsplex is at 75.9. And the aquatic center is at 81.8. So year-to-date general fund through 11 months is at 88.4%. Municipal road aid is at 89.3%. And the capital fund is at 49.4%. So we'll look at our cash fund balance. Cash balance at the beginning of the year was $17,617,425. Adding our year-to-date receipts of $52,083,858 and subtracting out our year-to-date expenses gives us our cash balance at May 31st of $20,835,786. Minus our current encumbrances of $117,396 gives us our available cash, May 31st of $20,718,390. After we subtract out our two reserve accounts, we have an unassigned cash fund balance of $19,452,580. And when you compare that as a percentage to our adjusted operating budget, we're at 44.6%. When we compare that to where we were at this time last year, very close to the same percentages. And our last slide is our investment pool, the KLC Investment Fund. Cash balance, May 31st was $1,214,762. And we are back to having a gain. So market value on May 31st was $1,226,227. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about May's financials.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton? Questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Right. Item 10, approval of minutes for June 3, 2025 regular meeting. Need a motion. Got a motion by Don. Second by Clayton. All righty. Any discussion? All righty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All righty. All right, item 11, ordinances. Ordinance 14-2025 Code of Ordnance Supplement secondary.
Enacting and adopting a supplement to the City of Hawkinsville, Kentucky Code of Ordnances. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati, Ohio has completed the 2025 S-17 Supplement to the Code of Ordnances of the City of Hawkinsville, which supplement contains ordinances of a general nature enacted since a prior supplement to the Code of Ordnances of this municipality. Now therefore, being ordained by the city council of the City of Hawkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the 2025 Section 17 Supplement to the Code of Ordnances of the City of Hawkinsville, Kentucky, which includes ordinances adopted through December 31st, 2024, a copy of which is on file in the city clerk's office, is hereby adopted in full and incorporated into the Code of Ordnances by reference, the same as if set out in its entirety. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
A motion? Done. Second by Clayton. All right, any discussion? All right, call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard.
Yes.
Councilmember Velez.
Yes.
Councilmember Bale.
Yes.
Councilmember Drouet.
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
All righty.
All right, ordinance passed on second reading.
Okay, ordinance 15-2025 FYI 2425 Operational Budget Amendment, second reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Annual Budget for Fiscal Year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, by summary, Section 1 of Ordinance 34, 2024, amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, as amended as follows. Revenues, general fund, $54,676,496. Municipal road aid fund, $1,060,478. Prior year, MRA, $148,619. Prior year general fund, $3,537,607. Total revenues, $59,423,200. Expenses, general fund, $58,214,103. Municipal road aid fund, $1,209,97. Total expenses, $59,423,200. Surplus, zero. Section 2, the full text of this ordinance is on file in the ordinance in the office of the undersigned City Clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. So moved.
Amy, second by Don. Any discussion? All right, call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance passes.
All righty. Ordinance 16-2025 FYI 2425 Capital Budget Amendment, second reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Annual Capital Equipment and Property Replacement Budget for Fiscal Year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that Section 1 of Ordinance 35, 2024, amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025, capital equipment and property replacement budget is amended as follows. Revenues, transfer from general fund, $2,300,000. Transfer from general fund, wins additional insurance premium, $370,000. Transfer from general fund, I'm sorry, transfer from general fund to Fort Campbell, Kentucky, GSA contract, $100,000. Transfer from general fund, police department, $40,956. Prior year, capital equipment reserve, $998,741. Total capital revenues, $3,908,697. Expenses, information technology, $252,000. Police department, $373,909. Fire department, $1,450,000. City maintenance, $450,000. Fort Campbell contracts, $100,000. Service center, $25,000. Parks and recreation, $125,000. Agencies, $200,000. Buildings and properties, $550,000. Transfer to MRA, $283,788. Total capital expenses, $3,809,697. Surplus deficit, zero. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according Yes. Total capital revenues, $3,908,697.
Said it again.
Okay, $3 million. Let's see. It should be wrong, I think it's just... It's right, I missed one. Do that one more time. Total capital revenues is $3,809,697.
Yes.
All right, sorry about that.
Thank you. All right. Got a motion except?
Second.
Second, Brittany. All right, any discussion? Clerk, would you please call the roll, please, ma'am?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Ordinance 17-2025 FYI 2526 Operational Budget, second reading.
Adopting the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Annual Budget for Fiscal Year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, by summary, the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget of the City of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, general fund, $56,936,517. Municipal road aid fund, $1,326,507. Prior year, zero. Total revenues, $58,263,024. Expenses, general fund, $56,936,517. Municipal road aid fund, $1,326,507. Total expenses, $58,263,024. Surplus, zero. Section 2, adopts a classification and compensation plan pursuant to Chapter 30 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Section 3, sets authorizations to enter into contracts or agreements within budgeted allocations. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned City Clerk of the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Clayton, all right, any discussion? Done, call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
No.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Member Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All righty. Ordinance 18-2025 FYI 2526 Capital Budget, second reading.
Adopting the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky Annual Capital Equipment and Property Replacement Budget for Fiscal Year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, the fiscal year 2025, 2026, capital equipment and property replacement budget for the City of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, transfer from general fund, $2,310,771. Transfer from general fund, wins additional insurance premium, $390,737. Total capital revenues, $2,701,508. Expenses, information technology, $190,000. Police department, $575,541. Fire department, $350,000. City maintenance, $360,000. Fort Campbell contracts, $22,000. Parks and recreation, $70,000. Buildings and properties, $550,000. Transfer to MRA, $583,967. Total capital expenses, $2,701,508. Surplus deficit, zero. Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to acquire capital equipment or services within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section 3, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect July 1, 2025 after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion.
So moved.
Amy? Right, all right. Need a discussion? Right, call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right. Uh, executive orders. All right, executive order 29-2025 Legacy Hopkinsville Committee.
Mayor Knight hereby creates a Legacy Hopkinsville Committee to study and make recommendations to City Council regarding funding for the inner-city residential enterprise zone program. Legacy Hopkinsville Committee members shall be as follows. Councilmember Jason Bell, Councilmember Brittany Bogard, Councilmember Amy Craig, Councilmember Elizabeth Drouin, Councilmember Donald Marsh, Councilmember Vance Smith, Councilmember Brandy Stallins. No action is required.
Okay. Executive Order 30-2025 Hopkinsville Christian County Convention Center and Visitor Bureau.
Effective July 1, 2025, Heather Dawson shall be reappointed as a restaurant representative, and Pam Hale shall be reappointed as the hotel representative for the Hopkinsville Christian County Convention and Visitors Bureau. These terms shall expire June 30, 2028. No action is required.
Executive Order 31-2025 Hopkinsville Electric System.
Effective July 1, 2025, Philip Eastman shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Electric System Board. This term shall expire June 30, 2029. This executive order requires City Council approval pursuant to KRS 96.760.
Do need a motion?
Second.
Second by Brandy. All right, any discussion? Seeing done. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Clerk, call the roll. What? We got a call that you didn't hear nobody.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Executive Order 32-2025 Pinnacle Art Museum Board of Directors.
Effective July 1, 2025, Trevor Hooks and Shannon Snorden shall be reappointed to the Pinnacle Area Museum Board of Directors. These terms shall expire June 30, 2029. No action is required.
Okay. Executive Order 33-2025 Policeman and Fireman Pension Fund Board of Trustees.
Effective July 1, 2025, Fire Chief Steve Futral and Police Chief Jason Navy shall be reappointed to the Policeman and Fireman's Pension Fund Board of Trustees. These terms shall expire June 30, 2026. No action is required on that one.
Okay. Executive Order 34-2025 Housing Authority of Hopkinsville Board.
Effective July 1, 2025, Tim Goodacre shall be reappointed to the Housing Authority of Hopkinsville Board of Commissioners. This term shall expire June 30, 2029. And this appointment does require City Council approval pursuant to KRS 80.030.
Motion by Don, second by?
Second.
Clayton, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive Order 35-2025 Board of Ethics.
Effective July 1, 2025, Kristi Maddian shall be reappointed to the Board of Ethics as the alternate member. This term shall expire June 30, 2026. This executive order requires City Council approval pursuant to Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36.66.
Do need a motion?
So moved.
Second, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any likewise say nay? All right, executive order 36-2025 Human Rights Commission.
Effective July 1, 2025, Laquita Sepjuiva shall be appointed, and Caleb Ballard and Kristen Middlebrooke shall be reappointed to the Human Rights Commission. These terms shall expire June 30, 2028. Effective July 1, 2025, Christopher McCarley shall be appointed as a youth member. This term shall expire June 30, 2026. There's no action required.
Okay. Executive Order 37-2025 Court of Appeals Board.
Effective July 1, 2025, Karen Childs, Frankie Dudus, Mark McGee, and Ryan Maloskis shall be reappointed to the Code Appeal Board. These terms shall expire June 30, 2028. Effective July 1, 2025, Mark Graham shall be appointed to the Code Appeal Board. This term shall expire June 30, 2028. And this executive order requires City Council approval pursuant to Section 113 of the Kentucky Building Code.
Motion.
Second.
And motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Executive Order 38-2025 Southwestern Kentucky Economic Development Council.
Effective July 1, 2025, Lee Conrad and Philip Eastman shall be reappointed to the Southwestern Kentucky Economic Development Council. These terms shall expire June 30, 2027. No action is required.
Okay. Executive Order 39-2025 Hopkinsville Water and Environment Authority.
Effective July 1, 2025, Janet Dixon shall be reappointed to the Hopkinsville Water and Environment Authority. This term shall expire June 30, 2029. This executive order requires City Council approval pursuant to Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances, Section 51.035. So moved.
Got a motion? Second by Mike. Any discussion? Right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays likewise? Okay. All righty, we're down to item 13. Other, do we have any other business we need to discuss this evening? No other business? I'll go into councilman comments then.
I have a question, comment, however you all want to phrase it's good. I know we formed or voted to form the committee for the legacy funds, but I have a question I would like to better understand about that, and I'm not sure who to ask. So, I'll ask maybe Mr. Britton, Holly. Last week I asked a question, or the last council meeting, about ward-wise, how it affected all the different wards. And the answer I got at the time was it doesn't affect all the wards, only the ones that are in the inner-city. So, my question is if this idea behind this program is to help people in the inner-city or in those neighborhoods who need assistance with homes and stuff, how come we don't base that on an economic situation instead of geographic situation? In other words, why should we tell someone it doesn't apply to them who lives in Ward 7, or 8, or 9, or 10, if they're in the same financial situation that someone who lives in Ward 1, 2, 3, 4, wherever is in the inner-city? So, my question is why can it not be a geographical coverage versus, I mean, why is it geographical versus economic hardship? I just think it would, yeah.
Yes, sir. When the program was originally established, we utilized the existing target areas that were identified as low to moderate income based on census data that were being utilized under the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program.
Well, I guess part of the answer is it is based off income.
It is. It's based on the quality of the housing stock and the income levels of the individuals that live within those census tracts.
And again, I'm, I'm. Me, I like the idea and I know what they've done over the years and I think it's great. I'm having a hard time with why it's not equal for everyone that falls into those hardships, regardless of where they live. So if you have, I'll just make up a hypothetical, if you have a ninety-year-old widow who's living on a fixed income in Deepwood, Cox Mills, wherever, Great Oaks, and they're having that same financial situation as someone else in a different geographical area, to me, it would be more fair if it's based off of that than just where your home is sitting. Is there anything that stops that? Is that a council that set that up or?
There are, sure, there are some parameters. So for example, anyone who lives within those geographic boundaries are eligible for housing empowerment plans, so long as it's a homeowner-occupied unit and the cost of the improvements, which are exterior code violations ninety percent of the time, will look at interior code violations when it's the result of an exterior code violation, like a, a hole in the ceiling because of a roof. If the properties assess at sixty thousand dollars or more, that triggers an income calculation for anyone within that geographic boundary. So not everyone is necessarily eligible, so someone.
I'm sorry, but do the councils set the geographic area? That's the answer I'm looking for.
That is correct, yes, sir.
We can change that.
Yes, sir.
It does, we can, we can take it. I've been here almost my whole life. What the inner city is obviously has grown, so more homes need it more and more as we've grown. So I just don't understand how we lock ourselves in to citizens that need help in other areas to only certain wards. And, and, like I said, I said it out there as a question because I don't have a good answer to give people in my ward why they could not qualify for something solely based on geographic area?
Based on census data.
Based on census data?
Quality of the housing stock and the.
But those are our parameters. Excuse me, council set those parameters?
Yes, that is correct.
So council controls this program as far as what we accept it for, to be allowed for, geographic wise or even economic wise?
Yes, but they were established based on the census data is, is the point that I'm trying to make.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if it's a good place for discussion, I don't know if anybody else feels that way. I know it is, I got asked a lot from my ward and from other wards, just in general, especially after I asked the question at the last council meeting, I don't really have a good answer for why if someone in your ward that isn't in the inner city needs same of the same assistance and they fall into the same situation, why their home couldn't fall under the program when someone else's could? It's all taxpayer money, all within the city limits. So I guess, I don't know if now's the time for conversation or if I just say that when you all formed the committee, think about that. I, I don't, I don't know what the best route is here, that's why I'm kind of putting a comment out, asking a question at the same time, because I don't know how anybody else up here feels.
That's one thing the committee was going to look at because I got a bunch of phone calls after your comment too the other day. Thank you. And I appreciate that, but Councilman Bogard also asked that question to me, why does it just pertain to inner cities as well on that? And that will be part of the discussion of this committee on that, and we will bring it back.
I recognize if we do that, that it may require more funding, it may need more than the three fifty that was asked for.
Exactly.
And, and, and I'm fine with that. The only problem that I, that tears me up about it is why it's not equal for all of our citizens when all of our citizens are paying taxes. That, that's where I'm stuck on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Any more comments from the council? Okay, we're going to go into closed session. Item fifteen, property acquisition, KRS sixty-one dot eighty-one oh one B and pending litigation, KRS sixty-one dot eight one oh one C. We will be going into closed session now, thank you.
Motion.
Need a motion on that?
Motion.
Got a motion by Dawn, seconded?
Second.
Second by Brandy, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All righty, we're in closed session. Alrighty, we're in closed session. Alrighty, welcome back. We thank you for waiting on us. Uh, we're at a closed session. No business was, uh, tamed? No action taken? So we will move into item 16, Ward 11. Jason Be.
Had a quote from Martin Luther King. Uh, I'll pull it up. And the quote was, uh, "We must learn to live together as brothers and sisters or perish together as fools." But that I adjourned.
All right, we got a motion. Second? Second, but all of them in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.